Okay. Glenn. Okay, Connie, shall I kick it off? She left me. Okay, I got a thumbs up from Mike. So welcome. I'm going to call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order from March 1st, 2021. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Bob, for the flag. Can we begin with a moment of silence for the following? Marilyn Maloney, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Chris Gates, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Seth Farrell, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Janice F. Lorraine, a former employee and graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Hey, we're going to begin with the BEMAS presentation or Behavioral Intervention Monitoring Assessment System II. And I believe we have Lisa and Kim with us today. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to you to begin and take us through this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm Lisa Goldberg. I'm the Director of Social Emotional Learning and Social Studies. And I'm here with Kim.
Kim Mackey. I'm a data coordinator with OCMBOSI CineRic, and I work with North Syracuse District two days a week. Although since this fall with the pandemic, I'm actually here every day.
And we are extremely grateful, grateful for this opportunity to speak with you about BIMAS. And also, I think our district is so incredibly lucky to have Kim. She is locally the guru of BIMAS and is supporting districts through CineRic. So literally anytime we have a question, Kim is right there. So we have a couple of goals for the presentation this evening. One is to provide some context for why we are using the BIMAS. We'll also explain what it is, how it's being used, and share what's being learned and what's next. So first, a little context, because context really matters for this work. Even prior to the COVID-19 crisis, we know that our community, along with communities across the country, were struggling mightily with mental health issues, not only in adults, but really significantly in children. And we know that our own community has been grappling with mental health matters. We know that we've had some student losses over the last 18 months. And we also know that Anadaga County has one of the highest rates of suicide in the state. As a result, the county has been a recipient of the GLS grant, which has enabled us to work closely with Pat Brew, who's out of the Suicide Prevention Center of New York, which is out of the Office of New York State Mental Health. And they have done a tremendous amount of work with us. And we've been completely grateful for that opportunity. But I think it's really important that we understand that mental health issues existed prior to COVID. And COVID has taken them up a notch, if you will. And so it becomes really important for us to have a sense of where our students are. Obviously, there are lots of factors that we can see externally. We see a lot of behaviors that are exhibited in classrooms. We see absences or disengagement. But we can't really get a window into kids off of the surface. That's where BIMAS comes in. It helps us look not only at what's happening externally behaviorally, but what some of the internal concerns are. And it gives us a window not only into individuals and those kids who might need tier-two or tier-three interventions, but it really helps us with tier-one. It helps us look for patterns in a class, in a grade level, in a school. And so it is within that context that we looked to BIMAS. We started with a small pilot back in 2019 to elementary schools, Smith and Bear. Last year, we had three schools in the pilot. Sorry, the first year was Smith and Rocks. The second year, we added Bear, Smith, and Rocks. And this year, we have Bear, Smith, Rocks, and Lake Shore. We also have a small pilot at CNS High School. I'll come back and tell you some of the lessons that we've learned, but I'm going to turn it over to Kim, who will give you some specifics on BIMAS.
Thank you, Lisa. So what exactly is the BIMAS II? Well, it's a universal screening tool that's intended to assess the social-emotional learning competencies in students. So as a universal screener, it is a tool that's intended to be administered to all students universally. That is what helps to give us some of those data, as Lisa mentioned, to be able to look at some patterns to inform our tier-one. As a screening tool, it is not diagnostic, so it does not diagnose mental health issues. It is simply meant to be used as a screener to inform some of our tier-one classrooms or practices. And it is norm-referenced based on a child's age, meaning that it takes the results from each child's assessment and compares it to the results from other children of that same age within the norm dataset. And why do schools tend to use a tool like the BIMAS? Well, data, it's all about data. And the BIMAS gives us a lot of data that can be used for a variety of different purposes. So this is just a sampling of the ways that we typically see the data used. But the data can help us to assess student programming needs across a building or even an entire district. It also helps to evaluate how effective is our current programming. It can also drill down to the classroom level, so it can tell us where there might be additional needs at a classroom or even at a particular grade level. It also drills in further to show us where individual students may be in need of additional supports and can also help with kind of pinpointing those particular areas of skill need. And finally, it can also help us with progress monitoring, how students are responding to the curriculum, to their instruction, as well as to any interventions that may be implemented. So a little bit more information about the BIMAS. There are three forms available. There is a teacher rating, a student self-assessment, and there's also a parent form that's available. And a school can use any one or a combination of all three of those. It's typically administered to students two to three times a year. It's a questionnaire that consists of 34 items, no matter which form you're using, teacher, student, parent, 34-item questionnaire, where it's based on the frequency of the behavior being observed from zero to five. And again, it provides data at the individual student, classroom, as well as school and district levels. And it does offer progress monitoring so that we can measure and track any evidence of impact and growth along the way. So this is a screenshot, an example of what the teacher rating looks like. So down the left-hand side would be those 34 items on the questionnaire. And you can see going across the top where a teacher would rate each student based on the frequency with which they've observed a particular behavior, from never to very often. So you can see some of the indicators there, like appeared angry, was impulsive, maintained friendships. Just kind of a sampling of some of those items there. Again, trying to get at not only those external behaviors that Lisa mentioned, but also trying to get at some of those internal behaviors. It might be a little bit more difficult to see on the surface. And this is an example of one of the types of data reports that's available right within the BIMAS platform. This particular data report is actually a snapshot of the district by data that was collected from the fall assessment period with the four elementary buildings. So you can see at the bottom with the total there, we had 1,822 students that were assessed this fall across those four elementary buildings. This was the teacher assessment. And in light gray going across, you can see the five different scales where the data is teased out. So we have conduct, negative affect, and cognitive attention. Those are kind of levels of risk. And then the two on the right are more skills-based. So social and academic functioning is looking for those particular schools being evident within the students.
So one of the things, I wanted to jump in and just say two things. First, on the previous slide, when it said that the data was from Sandra Barnes, that's a mock account. That's not a real student, so we're not compromising any confidentiality. What's really interesting about this is that this data is tracking with what teachers are saying, that this year, there have been very few behavior issues. I think it's because we have smaller numbers of kids in the classroom, harder to quote-unquote "hide" or get away with something when class size is so small. But it also tracks with the concerns that teachers are expressing about lots of the social issues and isolation that kids are grappling with, as well as some loss of ground with academic functioning. So this was the elementary school, the four in our pilot.
And new this winter was the pilot at CNS High School. And this time, we tried something a little bit different. The data on the last screen, we noted, was the teacher assessments. And we still did use the teacher assessments for the high school pilot, but we also added in the student self-assessment. So this was kind of interesting to be able to look at the data and see how, you know, look for any differences or similarities in the data between those two different sets. So here we see that there were 59 assessments or ratings that were completed by the teachers. We also had 64 students complete the self-assessments. And one of the items on the questionnaire is referred to as item 24. And item 24 is a critical item. It identifies students that have had thoughts of self-harm. So if we look on the left-hand side in that kind of white-blue box, we can see the results from the teacher ratings. And based on those 59 assessments that were conducted by the teachers, we had one student that was endorsed for concerns of self-harm. And if we shift over to the right-hand side, we see the results from the student self-assessment. And with the student self-assessment, we had 11 students that self-disclosed thoughts of self-harm. So one of the takeaways when we looked at this data was really seeing how this tool helps to tease out the difference between the external behaviors that we might be seeing in the classroom versus those more internalized behaviors where students might be, you know, thinking those thoughts more confidentially and we may not know as classroom teachers or support staff within the school. So when we saw this data, we kind of realized that it was 11 students that the district was able to immediately make contact with those students, as well as their families, and have those critical conversations. 11 students that probably would have, you know, gone under the radar and not had contact had we only used the teacher assessment.
So thanks, Kim, and some next steps. So I'll start just with the data from CNS. This is a really small pilot. And we learned a lot. We learned that we can't do the whole building in one shot. We just would not have the capacity. It's imperative that we have a principal who's available that day and counseling staff, because when these items, item 24s pop up, we want to make contact with the family immediately. We also have to really think about how powerful that connection is between teachers doing the screening and students doing self-screenings. With BIMAS, students can screen themselves ages 12 and up. And so this might be super-powerful as we dig into the data in terms of how we plan in a proactive way to support all students. Speaking of data, we have a long way to go at really maximizing the potential of the data. We've done some first steps with the elementary buildings at looking at data analysis by grade level or in PLCs. But we've only scratched the surface. And that is really, I think, where the big benefit will pay off. How do we take what we learn in this data and make it actionable in programming, both proactively in a tier-one model for all classrooms, all settings, and also as we dig deeper into interventive strategies at tiers two and three? So that's what we have. I'll stop sharing. And if you have any questions, we're happy to field them.
I have a few, if I may go. I don't hear anybody else yelling. Phew, yeah, I just, the, what'd you call it? The universal screening tool, what does it look like? Or, I mean, you're using language that's consistent with, like, this, I would think this is an RTI presentation, which is good, because when I'm familiar with tier-one, two, and three, we're looking at a universal screener, we're looking at progress monitoring. But now we're doing this for social-emotional learning, and this is all relatively new, at least to me. Although we did have, I was calling it BEMAS, sorry, BIMAS. Last time I saw this, now it's BIMAS II. I'm curious what the screening tool looks like. I mean, it's administered to students. How?
Kim, would you like me to bring up that slide again?
Yeah, if you would, please. And I'm sorry, yeah.
Sure, no, that's great.
And this is done electronically. So this is what teachers would see on their computer screen, and they would go through and click the ratings for each student.
And the student version, at the top, it would say during the past week, I.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, so students are doing this when? Is it like administered in a class or just done? Yes, it is.
Kim, do you want to speak about how we set up the pilot? Again, this is not at the elementary level. It would only be for students 12 and up.
It is up to the school's discretion when they would like to administer. So I know some of the districts that I've worked with, it goes through the student's email. They get a link to their email. So some have simply sent it out, and then it's up to the students to complete it on their own time. With the pilot, we did a bit more structure than that. There were six teachers in the pilot. And so each teacher identified one class and a particular time when they were going to give it during that class period, so that we were able to get a higher response rate and also provide a little bit more guidance to the students to complete it, given that it was their first experience with it.
Additionally, we didn't want, if an item 24 was red-flagged, and there's, in the system, you can put in who gets notified. And I'll let Kim speak to who we opt to notify in our system. But we didn't want some, a student, for example, completing it over the weekend when we could not attend to that student and connect with the student and the family. So we really wanted to make sure that we did it in as safe and supportive a way as possible. Kim, do you want to talk about how we notify?
Sure. Again, those settings are up to each individual school, how they would like to do that. But in the case of the high school, the counselors were notified, the principals, and I believe we left the teachers off. Some schools choose to also include the teachers. We did not for the pilot, although we did hear feedback from the teachers that they were kind of glued to their dashboard screen. So they knew anyways, as the kids were completing it, they could see the results, and they knew.
And just one last thing that jumped out at me. You mentioned it's norm-referenced, and I'm trying to figure out how I want to even word this, so I understand my own question. Norm-referenced in regards to every student in that age group who took it, say, in the fall of 2020. So you're looking at that batch.
No, it's, it's a little bit different than that, because it's actually based on the child's birth date.
So where a child of that age should be, okay. Not where they are in that given situation. Okay, that's important to me. I see you're saying, okay.
And of course, it was not normed during a pandemic, so.
That's what was going through my head. Okay, okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Question that I have in regards to administering the test during school or while the kids are in school and maybe not in a private space. Are we getting true answers if they feel they have an audience and they don't have privacy?
Each of the students took the screener on a Chromebook. And so, and particularly in a distanced environment. And it's a very short questionnaire. It takes probably two to three minutes. So I hear what you're saying, and I think that's a really important concern. And I think at this point, we were not, that was not anything that was reported from the teachers. And in terms of the students, I think the fact that we had so many students pop up speaks to a real accuracy. In, I don't have a sense that students were holding back. It's confidential. No one would see it. You know, their classmates wouldn't see it. And they're very much used to that idea of working on their Chromebook on their own work. So I think it's relatively safe.
Okay, and I believe it was prefaced by the classroom teachers of who would have access to those results, so they knew that their counselors would be able to see it, as well as the principal.
And additionally, a letter went home to parents and at the high school, because kids were self-screening. And they were, you know, if they had any objection, they could contact the school. And as far as I know, no one said no. I think parents understand and want, there was one, thank you. I think parents understand and want supports around their kids. This is going to take a village to create the safety net for kids.
And that was my second question, is with the number of kids that are reporting some warnings, how do we cover? It sounds like a very heavy need.
It's, I think, and I want to be careful, because I don't want to violate anybody's privacy. But I think kids who were red-flagged have, there are supports, and they're being attended to. And families were, I think, very receptive and really partnered with CNS, which was great.
Okay, any other questions? Matt? You're muted, sir.
I can unmute myself, yes. I'm going to unmute you, so, no. I guess, maybe I don't fully understand the whole situation, the whole thing. But if a child's situation changes over the weekend, are we waiting until Monday to deal with it? Or how's that, because you kept saying that it's not done on the weekends, so.
Great question. Let me clarify. If we left it to kids to independently, if they got a link to the screener and they could do it whenever they wanted, then we would run the risk of not getting that information. We'd run the risk of getting that alert over the weekend, which makes everything more challenging. We opted to do it within the safety of the classroom, with the teacher available. When school was in session, so that families could be contacted immediately. Kids could be connected with immediately, so that, you know, in terms of, I'm just talking about the screener, not mental health services being available in the community. Which, if I could put a plug in, there is a, New York State Office of Mental Health has a helpline that any student in our catchment, in our district, any household that has students 18 and under, starting today, there are going to be pop-ups for mental health helpline, so that kids, when they get pop-up ads, this will be among them, so that there's help available 24/7. But we did not want kids doing this screener, you know, on the weekend and then have these reports be generated without adults being made aware immediately, which would be very challenging over the weekend. So those, the screeners happen within the school day. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I just, what if, what if the child suddenly, you did, because you said they got the 24-hour hotline. So I'm assuming if they go on the website, that's going to pop up. It's going to bring, okay. Because, I mean, what happens if the kid does the assessment on a Thursday, and all of a sudden Saturday, they tank and they need this help? And now they're going to wait until Monday to take the assessment, when they actually could have used that help on Saturday? But, you know, giving me the other pop-ups and stuff, I guess, satisfies my question.
And also, we have 211 available in Anadaga County. We have on our Family Wellness page, there is a link that goes directly to all of our counselors, as well as counselors in the community. And the counselors, I mean, there are all kinds of helplines in the community. So if kids need help, they need only to reach out. And that's why New York State is really redoubling its effort on GOT5. You text it to 741-741, and it's free 24/7 confidential text line that connects you with mental health supports. And as always, if an individual or a family member is in crisis, you call 911. You call an ambulance, and you can go to CPAP. You can go to Upstate for immediate help.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
All right. We will move on to the budget update we have from Mr. Keegan on the tax cap, I believe.
Yes, we have a very, very brief update. When we presented the initial budget, we told you that we have a few more pieces of information that may affect the tax cap. And we're always hesitant when we tell people, you know, there's more information coming and things may change, especially about something as sensitive as the tax cap. And so we were able to run down two of the items that were our loose ends. I don't anticipate this number changing after this. You know, we've pretty much got it nailed down. So let me share with you just a quick update on the tax cap. So this is the tax cap I filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office last week. And it's 3/100th higher than the one that I presented on the initial budget. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just walk people through the tax cap calculation one more time. So the concept is, we start with last year's tax levy. That's actually this year's tax levy, the 2021 tax levy. And that's that $92.5 million. And the state publishes, we don't fabricate this number. This is a number the state publishes, a thing called a tax base growth factor. And it looks at the tax base of our town, looks at how much it might have grown, and we apply that factor to it, and we've done that. The state only wants us to impact our tax cap by the change in pilot revenues. So you can see here, I had the number from last year, the 20, or when we did the tax cap last year, the 2021 number of $424,000. Well, I was able to get our, the latest estimate, the most current number we have for our pilot revenues that'll impact the 21, 22 year. And so in effect, what the formula is doing is taking And so in effect, what the formula is doing is taking the difference between these two numbers and impacting that the tax cap by that amount. Further, you, it's the same concept with the tax levy for capital. That's really the local share of projects. And since we've had a number of projects that the voters have already approved and they are, we are going to have implications on our debt service, meaning we're going to have a portion of our tax levy that's going to service that debt. I was able to finalize that number as well and we worked with fiscal advisors to update that number. And again, it's taking the difference between what it was last year and the difference and, and the amount this year. And the central theme of our tax cap is inflation. The, the rules are you can increase the tax levy by 2% or inflation as evidenced by CPI, whichever is less. And the inflation rate for the past 12 months has been 1.23%. And so that's what's used here in the calculation. So our tax levy for next year, the 21, 22 school year, looks like it'll be 95 point, roughly point five million dollars at the tax cap or about $2.9 million increase or 3.19%. Last week, a week ago, I presented 3.16%, but slight, slight increase. And on a $100,000 home, it's about $75 for four star. And that's, any, any questions on the tax cap? That's the update that I wanted to give the board.
Any questions? Well, okay. Thank you, Mr. Keegan.
Yeah. And just to, to let you know that we'll, we'll be back again at the next meeting with another update. And if there are any changes to that tax cap, we'll have it, but I, I don't anticipate there'll be any changes. And we'll look at our bus bond proposition and, and the, the board will ask the board to approve our notice of budget hearing and election. And hopefully we'll have more news on, on the budget in general. So, so thank you.
Hey, we have one more presentation. That's a reopening update. I believe that's Mr. Bowles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruffalia. There's just been a lot of talk, not only for us, but many districts and many areas around, around the country about reopening. So just wanted to give you a little bit of a snippet as we're moving forward with some things. So one of the things that's happening with reopening is, as people know, the positivity rate in New York State has, has dropped significantly and it's below 3.5%. And we've had self-reporting because right now we cannot collect data on who's been vaccinated. But self-reporting to the NSCA, we have definitely above 80%, probably closer to 90% of our staff that have had at least their first vaccination and are set up to have their second. We are currently awaiting, I think I announced on the news, further guidance. One of the things when we had the reopening document that came out this summer, talking about social distancing, looking at will that restriction be reduced from the six feet? Because that's what we're using right now. And that's why the student number in class is limited because we're keeping people at least six feet apart. But the good news today, and I was at both the junior high and the high school. We added an additional day to their schedule. And so people may say, well, how did you do that? Well, one of the things is there has been a shift over time from the beginning of the year where more students have either gone remote at the secondary level, changing the number of students that were in the hybrid, thus making, creating space available within the classroom. So we were able to get those students that are currently hybrid, an additional day of in-person instruction. And we communicated that for about a three-week period to parents and families. And today we witnessed both buildings had a very successful time with adding more students to the building. We watched the drop off at the, at the junior high and walked the, walked the halls and it, it went well. The social distancing guidelines, again, I just told you, more students were, became remote. And that's what created some space for them. One of the things that's also happened is the number of positive cases at both of those levels has significantly dropped, dropped off. And as you've seen in the county, numbers have, have declined significantly as far as the number of positives. What we would have in one week, numbers are now at least two weeks of numbers to equate what used to be happening earlier on. We did send out a survey last Wednesday to parents for their feedback in increasing the number of in-person days. K-12 to, to see what, what the parents are thinking. We will have to send another additional one to parents to get more specific information. We, I think you, you saw, we did that at the elementary level between December into January. And they gave the school building specific information of what their needs were. We may see that again, depending on social distancing requirements. But we're, we're not, we want to make sure we hear parents because there are some people that are still concerned about social distancing and things. And we want to make sure we get as much information from them as possible. By the end of this week, we will be surveying staff. We need to hear from staff as well. And we'll, we'll get that information out to them definitely before this week ends. One of the things that we spent a lot of time in this past summer, just reviewing our, our protocols. All the things that we need to take a look at in order to eventually reopen for more days if, if social distancing guidelines are relaxed. And again, if for some reason things start to really change, we, we'll have to look at the data and evaluate that as well. And I think you've heard that at, at times by the Department of Health. They're, they, they want to continue to look at the data and the metrics to make sure they're not operating too fast. So some of the other things that have to be taken into consideration is transportation. So right now, Mr. Keegan and Mr. Conti know we currently have one child in every seat on the school bus. There are 11 rows in each. So you could get 22 students unless you have more than one student from the same household. That guidance needs to change as well when they, when they look to change six feet social distancing. We can't have transport only 22 kids and try to get kids into four or five days of school. We'll be driving that bus like crazy trying to just get them there. Our cafeterias will need to make sure that there's a change in what we do, just providing lunch for the students and with the social distancing, if that changes. Our physical education classes, the numbers that we have for social distancing are 12 feet. They have to be 12 feet apart. If we're getting more students in the classroom, we need to make sure those numbers for phys ed change equally as such. Chorus, when singing, those distances are also 12 feet because they're talking about students projecting. So all these distances need to make sure at least they're addressed if they address the six feet going to three. And then the question about remote students wishing to return. All of those things need to be considered when we're looking at reopening. One of the things that people are asking is so when, when will this happen? What, what, is there a timeline? Well, the timeline is when, when we get more guidance and information. The goal is, as you can see, Mrs. Goldberg and, and Mrs. Mackey, talking about social emotional learning. We all recognize that our students need more social interaction. It's affecting their mental health and that's something that we want to make sure we address so that the academics can get done. But unless we address the social emotional aspects, the academics are always going to struggle until their other needs are met. So there's going to be more to come once we get a final word as far as when we can try to do more things regarding social distancing. The high school and junior high just made a change. And that's, again, that's our older students. It may, we don't want to make too many changes too fast with secondary. So more to come once we have more information. Thank you, Mr. Keegan.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bowles? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move to comments from the audience. Something that's back to us today new and we're, sorry, a little first try at this. So I believe, where's Mrs.? Okay, Connie Gibson. There you are. All right. So this Lee, Mrs. Lacy, I, I know you've seen all the rules. So you have the three minutes. And if you go beyond that, I'll kindly interrupt you and then Connie will bring it to an end if we need to. But I'm sure we won't get there. What I do want to let you know though, is if you don't get through everything, please feel free, send whatever you have to us in writing. This board receives a lot of correspondence and we do read, read those. So I want you to know that. So go ahead, however we do this. Can you unmute?
I, I can't unmute her.
Does she unmute herself?
She has to unmute herself. Yeah.
Don't worry, we won't count the three minutes until.
Is it possible? My son just made a cameo. Thank goodness they know how to do this. Okay. So my name is Robert Lacy and my husband and I have a son in the ninth grade. I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Bowles, Mrs. Trowes and all the amazing staff at the junior high for all they've done seen and unseen to support our son this year. I'm encouraged by the fact that we will be adding an additional day at the junior high this week and implore the board to do all we can to support students being back in school five days a week. In addition, I ask that more opportunities for social interaction be investigated. Our kids need more ways to connect. And when I say connect, I mean talk, not text. We need to get creative if we want to help our kids socially and emotionally. My son on his own hosts a weekday lunch Zoom for his friends. The class of 24 recently hosted a bingo game over Zoom and it was a big success at the junior high. How great would it be if things like this were done all the time? And finally, as you begin work on the budget for the upcoming school year, now is not the time to cut staff or extracurricular activities. And just a reminder that extracurricular activities are not just sports, but the arts too. Students need more ways to connect in the upcoming year and bigger class sizes is not the way. We're grateful for the opportunities we have for input and hope there'll be more ways to be heard. And I'd like to encourage the board members to interact more with, with folks. A board member would be a welcome addition to the parent advisory committee to hear from parents firsthand. Mr. Bowles attends every single meeting that we have, as does many of the associate superintendents. Mr. Keegan is often there. And it would be wonderful to have somebody from the board hearing from the parents. In closing, thank you to Ms. Gibson for all the work she did to make this possible. And I hope if more parents are listening, that they also take this opportunity to speak before the board because it's disappointing that I was the only one that signed up. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And yes, thank you very much, Connie, for, I know we've been working on that for a while, making this happen. And I'm sure as Mrs. Lacy said, we'll have more takers down the road. Okay, we're moving into Board of Education Committee reports. I will start with, as I always do with Mrs. Scanlon, who has some policies for us today. So, yes, Mary.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, our policy committee, we met last Tuesday, February 23 via a Zoom meeting. It was a great meeting. We had seven policies that we reviewed and all seven are on tonight's agenda for board approval. Two of the policies, we are recommending changes. So they are amend and re-adopt that we're recommending. And five, we're recommending to re-adopt without change. And our next meeting will be March 23.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon.
You're welcome.
Mr. Crabtree, the Legislative Committee report. Thank you.
We met the day after policy, February 24 by Zoom. I'm very, very impressed this year, Paul, in that we have our representatives joining us. They've been there every single meeting or an aide. So this meeting, Mr. Sterpi was, Al Sterpi, our Assemblyman was there and he participated quite a bit. And I will share some of those, but also his aide from Albany, Justin Perkins, a former CNS graduate, always participates. John Mannion had his aide, Adria, participate and Jacob Sharetz, who was Pam Hunter's aide, participated. But also want everybody to know that Mrs. Lacy is a member of this committee and she has added a lot to this committee, has great ideas for our, our election of our board and so forth. Again, we spoke, as Don knows, I think it's like a running thing, as Paul knows too, about the governor's budget. Foundation aid is frozen, been frozen, you know, more than the land around us. The service aide, which now at BOSIS is very nervous about because transportation and BOSIS and eight other aides are going to be put together. I think Mr. Sterpi and Mannion and the rest, Rachel May are going to not have this happen. And then the other thing, which I still don't quite understand, is he wants to do a little bit different with the STAR program. What I think Al was saying is it'll stay the same, but he's trying to get more and more people to get a check. Instead of having it taken off your taxes, you would get a check sometime in the fall. One good thing I, we heard was Al Sterpi is updating that foundation aid. He's got a new bill that he's drafting. So I think, Don, it sounds like it's a, you know, we're moving forward a little bit. However, the governor has a few problems at this time. I don't have to mention what they are and they really have not, this is kind of scary to me as a board member. They have really not started the budget. And as you know, we have less than, well, we have about 31 days until a budget is supposed to be in place. But our senators and assemblymen are working on something else, which is in the news. So just be aware of that. We touched base. Connie is so good about this. The budget vote will be the 18th. And I know Don got a little nervous, but there will be the opportunity to get an absentee ballot. You will not have to mark anything for that. However, it will not be mailed out to people. You will have to do like Connie has. It's on the website. You have to apply for an absentee ballot. So the voting will be you go into Cicero or you go into the board office and you will vote just as you have in the past. But if you want an absentee ballot because you're still nervous about COVID, you can do that. But you're going to have to apply for it. That is about it. And our next meeting is March 24.
Okay. Thank you. And.
Did you want to add anything or Terry? Do you want to add anything?
I just want to give, make sure I give the credit where it's due because you've, you've, you've made sure those legislators and their aides have had, have received invites for every meeting and they've been getting there. So I thank you for doing that. Cause really what we're doing, I mean, we used to talk about planning for lobbying at these meetings. Well, actually we're lobbying at these meetings, which is what I think is a good purpose for this meeting. I think we need to keep that in mind while we have them in front of us to let them know, you know, these are our needs. And I think we did a job of that, a good job of that last week. I think just keep it in front of them. Keep it in front of them. So thank you. Terry, anything to add? I'm sorry.
Exactly that. The, Al Sterpi was there. He explained what's going on to us very well. He's trying to do everything he can for us, as are the other members that attended. And right now they're on. And right now, they're on pause, um, but they are trying.
Okay, thank you. And we're up to superintendent's comments. Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Farfalia. I want to start out, uh, again, we mentioned that the junior high and high school added a day uh that started uh this morning, but I just want to give a a major thanks to the teachers, the staff um at those two buildings, as well as the administration, because it was a wonderful day getting into the buildings. And we had everything from transportation uh on down through the cafeteria, people, the custodians. Uh, everybody was very welcoming. The students looked uh happy to be there. I saw kids coming in fist pumping students that they hadn't seen uh because they had a different cohort. So uh again, uh, for all the people that made that happen, I I do want to say thank you. Um, it was very uh pleasurable to see, and uh hopefully we can do more of that. Um, other things that have gone on is that uh I did get a a very nice uh kind of video this weekend from one of our uh kindergarten teachers, working with her students on mask wearing, and they did it to song. And so uh it was just very uh neat to see them dancing and and using that to do some of the things in kindergarten. So uh Mrs. Kenees, I want to thank you for sharing that. Um, I also want to give a a thanks to um Mr. Root and Mr. Parrish up at the high school for their work in the pig class. Uh, when I was up there today, I got to see firsthand um some of the things that they're doing with the pantry and the delivery of uh uh food bags to go home, impressive, like there's no tomorrow. Um, if you ever get an opportunity to get up there, you need to see the work, and it's just blossoming like there's no to, uh, uh, again. And there's such a need, and his students are really gaining the value of helping others by doing that uh within their pig class. So I do want to say thank you uh for that and sharing. Um, I did talk to Mr. Bednarski, and our girls' basketball is five and oh. Uh, Jessica Cook scored thirty-eight points. Uh, boys' basketball's four and two. Um, there hasn't been any issues with our bowling, they with with what they've been doing, so that's been very nice to see. Uh, boys' swim, uh, finished a meet with West Jenny and had a great season. Um, and one thing that uh he left is that uh student uh Brooke Blaisdell signed a letter of intent to Duke for track and field. So um, that's uh some of the latest that uh is happening around the district. And again, uh, a lot of hard work by many students and staff, working with our children. And uh, when you see the students who are now participating in activities as a whole, um, whether it be a sport or co-curricular, it is making a difference. So I want to say thank you to the board because our students needed that as well as the academics. That's all I have, Mr. Farfalia.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Any Board of Education comments? Any further ones? Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
I um participated the other night in the Central New York School Board's Roundtable with a brand-new chancellor of the Board of Regents, uh, Dr. Lester Young, um, out of Brooklyn, New York. Um, I want to thank the Central New York School Boards for doing this. We kind of got away from it last year. So real quickly, I'll just summarize what I heard from him. Very positive. He has been in a large Board of Regents um for quite a long time, since two thousand and eight. So um, he's not new to the Board of Regents, but new to chancellor. Um, he says, and it's a lot of things that Mr. Bowles has talked about, uh, we need to reimagine about our future for our students. We need, as the public, to recommit to public education. That's what it's about. Um, he is not a supporter of charter schools. It's not helping our public school system. And I like to hear this, significant investments in our teachers and in the learning in our community. He said, "School is the most important part of our community. It is the foundation of North Syracuse or Cicero or Marytown. It's the school. Think about it. It's the foundation." I love that. And also, he believes in equity and diversity um in the workforce. So I really enjoyed um listening to him. But two items that I know the board is interested uh in the community is in testing. As you know, I brought that up last week, and then within the end of the week, um, we're going to have to have testing grades three through eight uh for the students that are in the classroom. However, he said, "I have not given up." That evening, he had talked, "We do not have a Secretary of Education at this point, has not been approved by the Senate. So we have only an undersecretary." He says, "I will not give up on this waiver." I told him personally, "We must not be testing these kids." Um, they're not, you know, the accountability should not be there and so forth. So I like that. He's a little forceful, and I like that. And then, this is something that's come up in our budget. He and the new commissioner um have sent the governor um a letter saying, "We're getting this," you know, as Dan has said in the budget presentations, Dr. Betty Rosa and uh Mr. Young, that we're getting seven million. When this stimulus goes through, we, we know, we hope that comes this week, but that should not be happening. We should be getting seven million plus the seven million that the state should give. So I like that. Again, he's been a little forceful. He sent a letter to the governor saying, "We not only should get that from the federal government, but we should get the money that we deserve from the state government." So um, I was very impressed with him. Um, another thing I want to bring up to the board is, I saw this from Mr. Senator Mannion. "We had a young man," and I don't have the name, and I apologize, "who saved his mother," as all the board members know, uh, up there near Denny's um by taking control of the the car. Um, he was honored by the town of Cicero, and this weekend Senator Mannion went to his house in Adaram. I would be thinking nice if, be nice if the board and the administration would honor this young man at a future board meeting. I mean, he, it goes to the junior high, and I just think it would be great that the school district would do that. And the last thing is kind of sad. Um, I've not had a good two weeks, as all of us have lost a board member, and I've lost some personal people. But um, we lost two members of the class of nineteen ninety-five. The only reason I know about it is because I have former students that are on Facebook and um had told me about Mr. Gates. Um, Mr. Gates was a graduate of our school district. Uh, well-known in our school district. He uh played football, I believe, with Mr. Bednarski. I'm not sure of that, but I'll put that out there. His brother, uh, Matt Gates, um, is very close to his brother, and he is a teacher, was a teacher at Cicero with me. He was a coworker that I worked with, a mentor uh for four years. So I know how difficult this is for Matt, and my prayers are with him and his family. The other one I was not aware about until this weekend. And this is really personal. It's, it is very difficult when you lose a a family member. Paul, I know your your wife has lost them, and we all have, but to lose a student is very difficult. Um, this man, Seth Seth Farwell, was a student of mine in the eighties uh at Bear Road. And uh, he was in our school play that I had, and I've got pictures of him, and I've contacted his wife, and I'm going to send it to. But this is where we should be proud of our former students. You know, we have great sports people out there, Pat Corbin and and Brianna Stewart. But we have people out there that are doing marvelous things. Seth became a naval SEAL. One of the top Navy SEALs uh for the federal government, the Naval Special Warfare Command. He was part of the security for the president of Afghanistan as a SWAT team member. I mean, that is a high honor to protect when Afghanistan was going through what it was going through. This is a former graduate of our school district, and we should be proud of so many of our students. Unfortunately, he lost his life um uh in an operation in October and left a beautiful wife and a three-year-old. And um, again, we have to be proud of our students. Where are they now? This makes me proud that he was a naval SEAL, so I just wanted to share that with the board. Um, thank you.
Oh, thank you for that. Thank you.
So Paul, also, I wanted to um kind of give a shout out to Dan Bowles. And uh, many board members may know that he has helped coordinate the high schools, the high school and the junior highs uh for the cant, with the canteen, so that everybody's communicating. Uh, there's things that that are said at the canteen by the kids that maybe are not heard by the staff at the junior high and high school. Um, and we, Dan helped facilitate everybody getting coordinated, everybody getting together. And now there's open communication between all all facilities, and it's proving to be huge. So we're getting to hear from these kids. Uh, there were moments that the canteen heard something that the high school didn't know, and vice versa, and uh major things. So thank you, Dan, for helping getting that facilitated.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to move to routine action items and ask for a motion for a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the board from February second, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. If I get a motion for that, motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Item B, a motion, please, for B, the consideration of the classification of disabled students by the uh District Committee on Special Education. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mrs. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, oppose, and that motion is carried. Okay, we have item A in front of us, discussion action items, approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two district calendar. If I could get a motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion or questions on that calendar? We had a reference in the Friday letter. Seeing none, all in favor, oppose, and that is carried. B, motion for B, the recommendation to abolish a one-point-oh FTE Senior Network Administrator and create a one-point-zero FTE Communication Network Analyst, and we had that discussed earlier. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, oppose, and that is carried. Motion for C, surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment. Motion, please, from this Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? I'll just, uh, I have a comment, like, I I like to, it's it's a sad day for me when I see blackboards as non-marketable, but uh I'll move on. All in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. For D, E, and F, those are our policies. So I'll ask for a motion. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne. And as you know, we have seven. We have the first two that were re-adopted uh with amendment, and then the five under F were re-adoption. So any questions or discussions on those seven policies before us in D, E, and F? Seeing none, all in favor, oppose, and that is carried. Thank you. Personnel reports, instructional personnel report, A. A motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Oh, I'm going to abstain.
And we have one abstention. That is carried. Item B, support staff personnel report. Can I get a motion for that, please? Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. At this time, uh, unless somebody wants a motion for executive session, we do not have any items on that agenda. So if nobody is, has a motion to make for any purpose, then I'm going to ask for a motion for meeting adjournment. Motion from Ms. Marizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon, to adjourn. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor, oppose, we are adjourned at seven-twelve. Thank you very much. I have to tell you a couple of times, it sounds.